All right, welcome to the Planning Board meeting. So before we begin, this is a reminder that this is also a remote meeting and teleconference using Zoom pursuant to one MRSA Section 403-A. Welcome to the Sanford Planning Board meeting of April 19, 2023. The meeting will now come to order. This is a public proceeding, and unless the board specifically votes to go into executive session, you have the right to hear everything that is being said and look at all the exhibits that are offered. Please notify the Chair if you were unable to hear or see something. Please know that if any Planning Board members have potential conflicts of interest of which they are aware, they will disclose this conflict prior to the board initiating a hearing or action on an application. All persons speaking will be asked to state your name and address and then proceed. At the sole discretion of the Chair, public testimony may be limited to five minutes per speaker. For each item, the applicant will be asked to describe the project. Thereafter, the Chair will ask the proponent of the project to speak, followed by opponents, and then those who are neither for nor against but who want to ask a question or make a general comment. Everyone who wants will have an opportunity to speak to the board through the Chair. Any questions must go to and through the Chair, who will then decide at what point to either ask staff or the applicant to respond. The Chair may wait until after testimony has concluded to seek answers to any questions that are raised by the public or board members. Please note that rudeness, uncivil behavior, clapping, cheering, booing, et cetera, will not be tolerated, and if these behaviors occur, the Chair at his sole discretion may terminate the hearing and reschedule it for another date. In addition, the Chair at his sole discretion will limit repetitious comments, though it is entirely appropriate for an individual to indicate that he or she agrees with a previous speaker. Prior to closing the public hearing, the Chair will ask if there are any new comments. Then the applicant will be allowed to make a single rebuttal in response to testimony which was provided. Once the public hearing portion of the meeting is closed, the Chair will accept no additional public comment. However, a member of the board at the Chair's discretion may ask the applicant or a member of the public to respond to a question. This will not reopen public comment. Planning Board decisions are based solely on whether an applicant has provided sufficient evidence to meet the requirements of local, state, and federal laws. In this regard, public testimony is most effective when it considers the impact of a project in light of Sanford subdivision, site plan, shore land, or zoning ordinances, and other relevant regulations. After the board discusses the merits of each project, it will vote on written findings of facts. Since the findings may substantially affect any appeals rights, and also as a matter of courtesy, the board asks that those attending the meeting not leave until the board has adopted the findings for the project you are interested in. After the Planning Board makes its final decision, any reconsideration by the board must be made at the next regularly scheduled meeting. If anyone wishes to appeal the board's final decision, he or she must do so within 30 days. The city's ordinance and comprehensive plan are available for viewing at the city's website and in the Planning and Development Department's office at 919 Main Street. Remember, this is a public proceeding. You have the right to hear and see what is happening, and we welcome public participation. Longest part of the meeting, right there. All right, so moving on to hearings and business. New business file K-30-55, 12 Roberts Street, TPD Apartments. Jamie, before we open this up, will you just center us, please?
Yeah, so this is not a public hearing, just so you know.
Okay.
So this is an extension request for a subdivision site plan approval that you guys made just about two years ago at this point. Site plan ordinance says that you have to ask for a renewal every year or the plan expires. So June 2, 21, you guys approved it. April 6 of '22, you extended it for the first time, and now they are asking for a second extension, which would make the Plin and Board approval good through June 2 of 2023. There have been no relevant amendments to the zoning ordinance that would affect this approval.
Motion to approve...
And I'm sorry, I said 2023. It's supposed to be 2024.
Yeah, 2024.
I made a...I read the wrong line.
Motion to approve extension.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Yeah.
I do have a question. This is the second extension that's granted. Why is there...can you give specifically a reason? Is there somebody here for TPD that can give a reason?
TPD is not here. I did have that discussion. It's market conditions. They can't get supplies quick enough. So they're currently working on a project at the Roundabout. It was basically the electrical components for that building were ordered 18 months in advance. They ordered this building at the same time, and they have not received it yet. So it's really waiting on components to be able to be...to do it.
Okay, so it's just not financial or anything like that?
No.
Okay.
They're hopeful that as soon as they're done, that one, that they'll have the supplies needed to start this one. The supply chain has been all over the map. It's gone through every trade, and one month you can't get insulation, one month you can't get PVC pipe. Right now, you can't get electrical circuitry.
Any other comments, concerns? Right, all in favor? Five, zero. All right, so moving on to new business file number R-19-49-1, Lot 1, Ladies Slipper Lane. Jamie, would you please orient us on this?
Yep, so the applicant is requesting an amendment to a site plan due to really an error that was made by the previous contractor. So the applicant's bought a lot off of the developer, paid the developer to start the construction. Survey determined that the foundation was placed about a foot and a half closer to the property line than the current setback allowed. So we had lots of discussions about potential solutions, trying to talk with the neighbor about maybe moving the lot line, about the state process on variance requests, and determined that the cluster subdivision section of the ordinance allows the Plin and Board to reduce the setbacks down to 50% of the underlying zone. So that allows you guys to reduce, in this case, it down to seven and a half feet. During the original approval, you guys reduced it down to 10 feet from 15 feet. If you reduce it down to the 50% allowed, down to seven and a half foot required, then they meet the setback requirement because the foundation is 8.7 feet. So this request is to not amend the lot lines, not amend the provisions in the whole subdivision, but just specific to two specific lot lines...I'm sorry, not two specific setback requirement lines, to reduce it down to the 50% of required at 7.5 feet.
Do we have somebody here...are you the applicant? Do you want to...
I don't have an easel, but I could show you your relation to the property line where our foundation actually sits, so that's encroached in that setback.
Okay. And you guys have it in your backup, but I also have it on my screen, and we could pull it...I could ask Ben to pull it up if you wanted on the big screen.
So we're only talking about the corner of the foundation. It's not the full, the full foundation. So just so we're aware on that. It's only literally like a foot and a half of that corner of the foundation that's encroached in that, in that setback, and that's what we're applying for, see if we can't get that reduced down to that seven and a half. Obviously, it'd be awful difficult for us this late in the game to go back and try to do something with that corner, especially where the construction had progressed where it is right now. To do that would be quite costly for us, and this has been a difficult project to begin with for us because of some change of contractors and stuff. And, you know, we were supposed to be in this house back in August, and we're not even there yet, so.
And I can confirm, we're basically talking a foot and a half triangle that is in violation. It was not determined until the house was framed. So at that point, it would be very difficult to remedy the situation.
All right. Do you have anything else before we open the public hearing? Okay. Oh, yeah, sorry. Just for the record, could you just state your name and address?
Jeff Eaton, my wife Mary Ann from Lot 1, Ladies Slipper Lane.
Thank you. All right, I'll declare the public hearing open and ask that anybody who wants to speak, anybody else who would like to speak in favor of this project or this change amendment? Anybody who would like to speak against the amendment? Anybody on Zoom? All right? Anyone who would like to speak neither for nor against, who would like to make a general comment? Okay, hearing nothing. I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we can move on to discussion. Anybody have anything they would like to discuss on this?
No.
All right, I guess we'll hear the motion.
The Site Plan Review Committee recommends that...sorry? I have the wrong one? Give me just one second. I have it, I just don't... Sorry, we got it. Let the Plin and Board accept the information in the April 17, 20...I'm sorry, we have findings of fact. Are we supposed to do those first?
Yes.
I don't think we have to do...
Most of them are going to be applicable. It's only a couple that we have to actually vote on, or that there are conditions and...
So 275-10-39, Conformance with Other Regulations. I suggest it is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in Chapter 275 and 280.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Five, zero.
275-10-40, Financial and Technical Capacity. Recommend that it meets the standard because the applicant has demonstrated financial and technical capacity to complete the proposed project.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five, zero.
And then we have a rather large group. So 275-10-31, Pollution. 275-10-32, Sufficient Water. 275-10-33, Impact on Existing Water Supply. 275-10-34, Soil Erosion. 275-10-35, Traffic Conditions. 275-10-36, Sewerage Disposal. 275-10-37, Solid Waste. 275-10-38, Impact on Aesthetics. 275-10-41, Impact on Water Quality and Shoreline. 275-10-42, Impact on Groundwater Quality or Quantity. 275-10-43, Flood Plane Management. 275-10-44, Identification of Freshwater Wetlands. 275-10-45, Stormwater Management. 275-10-46, Recreation and Open Space. 275-10-47, Phosphorus Impacts on Great Ponds. 275-10-48, Spaghetti Lots. It is recommended that none of these are applicable because the applicant is not proposing any development. These standards are not applicable.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor?
How's that for speed reading?
Love it.
Good job.
Okay, now the motion. That the Plin and Board accept the information in the April 17, 2023 summary report and the April 18, 2023 recommendation to the Plin and Board, grants the requested waivers, and find that the application for file number R-1949-1, to reduce the required side line setback from 10 feet to 7.5 feet on the left side line of Lot 1, has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, and grants approval of the amended subdivision and site plan with the following condition: that if no revisions are required, that by May 19, 2023, provide two hard copies of the Plin and Board signed subdivision plat with book and page number, where it's recorded at the York County Registry of Deeds, and that by May 19, 2023, the applicant shall two paper copies of the approved plan for Plin and Board signature.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Five, zero. All right.
Good luck.
You're all set, thank you.
Yeah, you guys are good. Good luck with everything.
All right.
Did you do the motion to approve it already?
We just did.
We just did.
We did the findings of facts, and we did the...yeah. All right, moving on. File, new business file K-32-38, 982 Main Street, Gold Rush Pond. Right, Jamie, do you want to...
It does not appear as though Gold Rush Pond is on Zoom yet. They are attended remotely, so I would request that we switch the schedule and do what is fourth on the list now, and put them last, just to see if they end up showing up.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to old business file K-18-8, Minor Subdivision and Minor Site Plan of 18 Witham Street.
Okay, the applicant is requesting approval. I'll backtrack. You guys have seen this before. This has actually been in the works now for a few years. It has come to both site plan and Plin and Board before. There were some issues that the owner and consultant had to work out with the site. They gave us an updated submittal. It went through Site Plan yesterday, and between yesterday and today, they gave us an updated submittal from then. So at this point, they're requesting a minor subdivision and minor site plan for a portion of the land owned by...I'm going to butcher the name, but Doc Man Chu, not K-18-8, to do a subdivision to take an existing foundation and convert that into two apartments.
Are you the applicant?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Chris McDonald. I'm from BH2M in Gorham. I'm here today representing Coastal Oaks, and with me here is King Weinstein and Ethan Scott. And Jamie, thank you very much for that introduction. We've been before the board before on this project. The last time that we visited with the board was in November, if I remember that correctly. And at that time, we had a few outstanding items. I'm actually just going to plug a USB in. I'm not sure if the... Just put up a copy of this here, just for a... Okay, great. So what I've put on the screen here is kind of a...this is the site plan, so this is kind of a little bit more zoomed in than the full extent of the property. So last November, when we came before the board, at that time, we had been tabled in front of the Site Plan Review Committee for a few outstanding items. Just briefly, what we had comments back on were a maintenance agreement that we have with the owners of the Sherman Williams property here to the north. We had a boundary line agreement that we needed to draft up for a issue that surveyors found with this southern property line. We also have a existing right-of-way that is on this abutting property, and that right-of-way, basically, we had to clean the language up in that to make sure that the owners of Evergreen Real Estate had permission to be able to cross and utilize that right-of-way. We had also a comment on stormwater conditions. There was a question about an existing cover type, and basically, the resolution to that has been to update our stormwater model and then also include an infiltration catch basin in this vicinity of the parking area. Let me just see here. Yes, and then we had one other minor comment of including a Knox box, and we now note that on the plans. So at this point, we have the draft copies of the deeds and easements that I kind of listed off here to start with. Following up on the Site Plan Review Committee's findings yesterday, we had submitted a revised plan that included changes to the infiltration catch basin detail to make sure that there's maintenance and inspection requirements on there. And then we also made changes to the site plan and subdivision plan to clean up some text on the note about the property line agreement, that there's a draft agreement that needs to be signed before construction. So at this time, we have resolved all outstanding comments, and I'm happy to take any questions you guys may have.
Okay, thank you. What we'll do is go through the public hearing piece, and then we'll pick it up and then take it from there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, so I declare the public hearing open, and I will open it up for anybody who would like to speak in favor of this project. Anyone who would like to speak against this project that's being presented tonight? Right? Anyone who would like to speak, make any general comments? Yes, Diane, on Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. This is Diane Connolly at Springville. I have a question. If you could pull up the plans and please show the audience where the trail, existing trail is, and on those plans, please.
Diane, the trail is shown in a dotted line. You can kind of follow it directly behind the proposed two-unit, and it kind of meanders through the property.
Thank you very much.
All right, is there anyone else? I don't know if there's anybody else on Zoom. I can't see anymore. Doesn't look like it. All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed. So now I'll bring it to the Planning Board.
I got a couple of questions. I want, is this in the Springville Design District?
This is in...this is in Springville Design District, but one and two families are exempt from design review requirements.
Okay, fair enough. And my other question was, I guess, part of what Diane brought up, is there an easement for that, where the trail goes? There isn't.
So there is not an easement. This was discussed a little bit yesterday during the meeting. The owner is prepared to sign what the Snowmobile Club calls a permit, which is their way to formalize the use of places for their use, but that's the Snowmobile Club only. There are no proposed or current easements that would allow the public use of the property.
I think there was a letter in our packet, I think, from, was it Parks Department? Was there a comment about that?
From when it was seen quite some time ago, yes. The last time it came through, there was lots of discussion about the trail. On my summary memo on the suggested motion, I still left two things. As the consultant mentioned yesterday, most of the technical items were reviewed and quote-unquote hashed out, but the two that I found that was on the previous reports, one of them was handling of existing vegetation along the trail behind map K-18-7, which is what was formerly known as the Gentle Dental Property, and then handling of existing tree lines and vegetation. I believe those comments came because they're proposing to put the water service, like a dog leg up the side and across the back, and that is going to affect the current vegetation that's there. And I believe the previous Plin and Board had concerns about that buffering. So I left those two there with the expectation that you guys could talk about it, and we could leave them, we can remove them. But that's pretty much what's left in the discussion from all of the previous discussions was basically the trail and if there's a way to memorialize it, and basically, the buffering along that back property line.
Wasn't there a question or concern about the sewer line as well?
The sewer's been addressed.
It has been.
Yep.
So what is the buffering in between? Maybe you could refresh my memory a little bit here.
I'm sorry, did you say what buffer between is that, will you?
The buffering, yeah.
So it's...it was what is formerly known as the Gentle Dental Property. It's now currently being developed by Precision Roofing, but there's a line of...I'm not even going to call it trees. It's basically scrub brush and some overgrowth. It's not...
Nothing special.
It's not a mature stand of trees by any means. But if they end up having to remove that for the water line, then you're going to see from Main Street all the way back to lots deep type of thing. That's pretty much the only buffer currently there. And I'm not saying it has to be removed. Do you guys know if there's room to do the water line without removing that buffer?
Would it be possible for me to share my screen once again? Thank you very much. So the water line in question is...I'll try to trace this here. Hopefully, we can follow it. The water line in question will actually go through that former Gentle Dental parking area, and then it makes a 90-degree turn north and then follows the property line basically right in this area. Now, the thing to point out on this is that the property line is quite narrow through there, so again, I'll kind of trace. The property line kind of goes right through there. So really, we only have about a 20-foot-wide piece of property in order to bring the service line through. And again, this is only a two-inch service to feed the department building. So with that being said, you know, I don't think there's an intention to completely clearcut every piece of vegetation out there, but given that this will be an excavator and everything else, you know, I would assume that the majority of that would have to go to be able to install that water line. And I guess, just to speak to the nature of what's out there today and kind of what the future holds for that, there's no intention really to maintain that as lawn or anything else, so, you know, the vegetation that's kind of, you know, grown up through there, that would likely return. You know, and again, there's no intention really to mow it. The only thing I will say is, is that given that it's a water line and everything else, if there's woody vegetation or something like that that comes up on there, something like that would have to be managed, just so that we don't have roots that get into the water service. The other thing to mention, just very briefly too, as far as utilities go, is that the sewer is actually going to be going through an area of mostly open lawn, so that's kind of a little bit different in a different area than this. So the only real impact to that swath we're talking about would be that two-inch water line.
Did your question get answered?
Yeah, I think so. I'm just thinking about Springville, where design has been more of an issue. People like the village feel up there. I'm just wondering if having that wide-open area is going to be an issue, that's all. Yeah, it's kind of a jungle, but it's better to have need, I guess, than overgrown.
Don't disagree with that.
One of the things that I wanted to just quickly mention about this area, one of the things you can see on this plan is, is that, you know, there's a fairly significant grade change between the parking lot for this building here, and then where we're talking about putting the water line in. So, you know, kind of the properties behind that are kind of depressed. And the other thing to mention, as far as, you know, maintaining kind of a village feel and everything else, the existing building on that abutting property really would block most of where we're talking about. So, you know, there'd be a pretty narrow view, really only in this part of the parking lot right here. lot right here. There'd be a pretty narrow view to that area out back. So, you know, in general, the vegetation out back there really is more screening the back of this building from the subject property rather than the other way around. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? No? All right, do we have findings, facts for this?
We do, just for clarification. So in my motion when we get there, do you want me to put anything about requiring revegetation, or we all said would not require revegetation? So strike. Okay. 275-10-31 Pollution is recommended that it meets because construction will not generate any pollution.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
275-10-39 Conformance with Other Regulation is met because the proposed subdivision meets all minimum dimensional requirements, performance standards, and all other applicable land use regulations outlined in Chapters 275 and Chapter 280.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
280-16-7.1 Utilization of the Site is met because the subdivision and site plan have been designed to avoid sensitive natural features.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
280-16-7.10 Utilities is met because utilities are proposed to be brought into the development.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
280-16-7.11 Natural Features is proposed to meet because the project is designed to minimize impacts on natural features of the site.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
We're into our first group. 275-10-32 Sufficient Water. 275-10-33 Impact on Existing Water Supply. 275-10-36 Sewage Disposal. 280-16-7.8 Water Supply. 280-16-7.9 Sewage Disposal is recommended that it meets because public water and sewer districts have the capacity to serve this project.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
275-10-34 Soil Erosion. And 280-16-7.7 Erosion Control is recommended that it meets because adequate provisions will be made for erosion control.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
275-10-35 Traffic Conditions. 280-16-7.2 Access to the Site. 280-16-7.3 Access Into the Site. 280-16-7.4 Internal Vehicle Circulation. 280-16-7.5 Pedestrian Circulation is recommended that it meets because development will not create hazards to vehicular or pedestrian traffic.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? I have one question on this one. I know that there was some issues with the sharing of the driveways and all, do we adjudicate all of that?
The maintenance agreement was revised. It cleared up some of the responsibilities. And then also, another point of conversation was the snow storage, and it's mostly shown on the Sherman Williams lot. So I just wanted to make sure that was reflected in the maintenance agreement, make sure that the butters are okay with that and the way that it was proposed, and it was. So that's all been taken care of.
Right, terrific. Any other comments? All in favor? Five-zero.
275-10-37 Solid Waste. And 280-16-7.14 Solid Waste Disposal is recommended that it meets because public trash pickup is available.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
That was it?
Are you sure? Could we do?
Not applicable.
The second page. Group five, and I believe group seven, and group six.
I'm sorry? Oh, it's another page. Oh, there's another page.
The second page, the whole second page.
Imagine that. Good thing somebody's keeping track of it.
I love that you organized this this way, by the way. It's amazing. So group five, group six, and group seven.
Trying to get off easy tonight. I apologize. Okay, here we go again. 275-10-38 Impacts on Aesthetics. 275-10-41 Impact on Water Quality and Shoreline. 275-10-42 Impact on Groundwater Quality or Quantity. 275-10-43 Flood Plane Management. 275-10-44 Identification of Freshwater Wetlands. 275-10-46 Recreation in Open Space Areas. 275-10-47 Phosphorus Impacts on Great Ponds. 275-10-48 Spaghetti Lots. 280-16-7.12 Groundwater Protection. 280-16-7.13 Exterior Lighting. 280-16-7.15 Land Scaping. 280-16-7.16 Shoreland Relationship. 280-16-7.18 Buffering. And 280-16-7.19 Airport Encroachment. It is recommended that this standard is not applicable because the applicant has not proposed any development.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
275-10-40 Financial and Technical Capacity. And 280-16-7.17 Technical and Financial Capacity is recommended that the standard is met because the applicant has demonstrated adequate technical and financial capacity.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero.
275-10-45 Stormwater Management. And 280-16-7.6 Also Stormwater Management is recommended that the standard is met because the development will utilize the best of management practices.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five-zero. All right, now you're done.
Now we're done. Just checking to make sure you're keeping an eye on me.
Good job.
All right, so do we have a motion?
Let the planning board accept the information in the April 17, 2023 Summer Report and the April 19, 2023 Recommendation to the Planning Board, grant the requested waivers, and find the proposed minor subdivision and minor site plan, application number K-18-8A, to divide the existing single-family house lot for the purpose of building a two-unit apartment building, has satisfied the requirements of Article 6 of the subdivision ordinance and Article 16 of the zoning ordinance, subject to the following condition. By May 17, 2023, unless other arrangements are made with the planning director, provide three copies of the revised plans, and just for clarification, that's the ones that you sent digitally tonight, to the planning department that adequately respond to issues raised in the review, which are part of the following conditions of approval. Update the easement granted to map K-18-7 to revise ingress and egress to ingress, egress, and parkin, to address parkin within that right-of-way. And then B, all agreements between the applicant and neighbor and property owners shall be signed off and recorded at the York County Registry of Deeds. Two, we can strike because you've already done. Three, standard conditions, so two now, standard conditions of approval. Number two, performance guarantee. Number three, AutoCAD submission. Number four, signed recorded plat. Number six, inspection escrow. Number seven, pre-construction meeting. And number nine, alterations of plans.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passes five-zero. Congratulations, good luck.
Good luck.
Planning Board's signature, is that something that would happen in tonight's meeting, or is that something that we should be following up with you on?
There's nothing on the plans that are actually going to change, so if you have them, I think you can give a guess.
I've just got one copy of the two that need signature. That's sufficient.
We're supposed to have two, one that you end up getting back and one that we keep for our records.
Okay, I can get two?
All right, so we want to go back to K-32-38. It doesn't look like the applicant has called back in.
Ben, is anybody on Zoom? Nope. So I don't know how you guys handle these cases when the applicant doesn't show up.
I can tell you, in the past, I think this applicant has frequently missed several meetings in the past, once come to design review, and usually each time, we've tabled it.
He was on vacation yesterday. He was on the phone talking to us. He was on earlier.
I would honor a tabling motion. Although, I'm not, if anybody wants a motion, I'll...
Motion to table?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? Table motion passes five-zero. All right, thank you. And mineral extraction zoning text and map amendment will remain on the table, so moving on to Planning Director's report.
Just wanted to publicly thank Aaron and Jan and Alex and Matt. They continue to do a fantastic job. We are pushing a lot of projects through. We got three things already scheduled for next meeting, and now Gold Rush will be the fourth one on that agenda. We have a lot of projects still rolling in. We have, I think, seven staff-level approvals right now coming through as well. So the pre-apps have worked. We have a lot of stuff on the dockets to come through, which is great. Still no news from Beth. She has inquired to me about some gravel pit questions, so she is working on gravel pit, so hopefully that can come to a close at some point. She's very limited on hours, so I don't suspect that will be anytime soon, but it is slowly, slowly happening.
Question on Zoom. I don't know if you want to take it?
Yeah, after he's done.
So we're going to continue to be busy for a while. Projects are coming in. I think that's it. Somebody has bought Abashan. I don't know yet what it's going to be, but I did have a Realtor call today to set up an informal pre-app, so not ready for a formal pre-app yet, but I will know within the next week or so what is proposed. But yes, it has been purchased.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Before I open up for communications here, Diane, you have your hand up. Just want to give you an opportunity.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to make a comment. I don't know who this needs to go to, if it's Jamie, or... But when, I've been watching some of the planning board meetings, as well as some of the city council meetings, and the audio is constantly cutting out, especially tonight. Before you asked me to speak, I heard nothing out of your mouth, Mr. Chair. I heard all out of Jamie's mouth, and you're constantly cutting out. So is the podium for anyone addressing the board. So just a note. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Diane. We can look into it. The mics seem to be working in here, so I'm not sure what it is, but duly noted. Thank you. All right, I'll open it up for communications from the board. Anybody have anything they want to discuss tonight? All right. Motion to adjourn?